States of America and the United Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I apologize for the length of the agenda tonight, but that's part of Christmas break, so we'll try to keep things moving along. So our first item is the Annapolis Creek culvert replacement project. Mr. Torres?
Uh, yes, so this is culminating the thirty percent design for the Annapolis Creek culvert project. And so, this is kind of a high cliff presentation of the different aspects of the design, the elements of, really, kind of the goals that the city set for Reed Middleton and their team to basically look at, you know, how does this culvert replacement structurally get fixed? How do we deal with utilities? How do we work with the Bay Street pedestrian pathway? And ultimately, if we're looking at flooding issues, what does that look like upstream? And I'm glad that there are people here from the county, because we're, what we're going to be asking tonight as part of the alternatives is, we have to be really careful about our narrative. And our narrative is, we can just fix the culvert, the structural and utility piece of it, it's not going to address the flooding at Arnold. And we've got some really good graphics that show really what's happening there. If we want to broaden the scope from thirty percent forward, it's going to take a collaboration with the county. Because as you know, Arnold is in the county, this drainage system, this reach is in the county. We're really just at the tip where it comes into the city. So, I think Commissioner Grata will find this fascinating. And it's very fortuitous that you're here, because I think it's important that, I mean, this is, so my point is, whatever we decide, whatever the council directs staff to do, it's going to be really important that the narrative to the residents that live in that area understand what we're, what we're either limiting ourselves to doing, or what we're potentially doing. So I guess with that, Ken, if you want to introduce your team?
Yeah, um, my name's Ken Addison, I'm Reed Middleton, I'm our principal and project manager for this project. Uh, we were contacted, or we responded to the proposal earlier this year, and our team was selected. Uh, I have Julian Dodge, he is principal head of our civil engineering group. Our team, we also had geo engineers, uh, we have Joe Callahan and Shayna Sapatine with us. Um, and we also have another consultant, we didn't bring him, we have cultural, uh, cultural resource consultant on our team as well. Basically Reed Middleton handled civil structural survey, project management, geo engineers handled geotechnical Phase One ESA permitting, and really critical, the hydro, hydraulic monitoring that we did on the basin. Cultural resources took a look at the, we'll touch that briefly, they took a look at the cultural resources of the American Indian issues associated with this site. Um, we've got a lot of material, a lot of slides, we only have twenty minutes, so we're going to go through it real quick. We, we hope that everyone can hold questions to the end, we set aside ten minutes at the end for questions, but we really kind of want to get you at least exposed to the project and the issues that we see with the project.
And if, and if we have to, I assume we'd bring the whole team back, if, if you want to have a follow-up discussion, we can at another date.
You may want to take off your phone with you over there.
Or I can sit down too. As, as Mark kind of mentioned, there's a number of issues associated with the project. Uh, we know there's drainage issues, the existing crossing is showing its age. Um, and so our, our goal was to access the existing drainage system, evaluate the condition, uh, existing conditions associated with the culvert, identify problems, and look at options for improving it. And we, we did put it as a bullet item, but it's also coordination with the mosquito, I guess mosquito trail project as well. Oops, hang on. And for our presentation, we're going to be describing these issues. Uh, honestly, a good portion of it's going to be the hydrology and the hydraulics, but we, we did perform a geotechnical evaluation, we'll touch on that, structural review of the existing culvert, and, as well as environmental and permitting issues, and costs.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the existing conditions. The project is located just west of the intersection of Arnold and Bay Street, uh, and the outlet for the culvert is, here's an aerial on the left-hand side that shows, this is the antique store, and here's Bay Street, here's Arnold, here's a storage unit here. Uh, this is the existing culvert here, this is a wooden timber box culvert, and then there's this sort of odd arrangement with a thirty-six inch concrete pipe that comes in at a right angle to it. This is all buried, um, the out, uh, the inlet is in this wooded drainage area, the outlet is here on the beach adjacent to the antique store. Uh, looking at, uh, kind of little higher, higher elevation view, here is the wooden culvert again, um, is the storage unit, uh, the drainage, this is an open drainage, this is a thirty-six inch culvert here, that goes kitty corner across the intersection of Lawrence and Arnold. And then the Annapolis Creek continues up on the right-hand side of Arnold and the ditch, there's a couple of driveway culverts along the way here as well. This area is where there's flooding problems for some of the residents. It's not changing slides. Thank you. Okay, so this is the inlet, um, here's the wooden box culvert, um, it's, let's see, this is, from lagging to lagging is nine feet, and it's about seven feet high. Okay, next slide. Okay, did you go back one? Oh, thank you. Um, okay, so this is inside the culvert, as you can see, it's tightly influenced. Um, this pipe here is an abandoned sanitary sewer pipe that would be demolished in construction. This is an existing forest main, sanitary sewer forest main, that would be protected through construction. There is also a telephone conduit pipe that would, um, be relocated, and then, uh, in our construction, we would also add another pipe for future sanitary sewer project. Um, this is where that thirty-six inch concrete pipe comes in at a right angle like I showed, inside the wooden box culvert. This is up on the surface, uh, the outlet is over here by this mailbox, that wooden, uh, box culvert is about here, and then that thirty-six inch comes over here to the inlet in the woods.
And very quickly, you can see that picture, we did a repair of that a couple of years ago, because it was literally rotting and caving in on it, so.
Yeah, is that what this, um, impavement, you can see the natural man.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the inlet right here, this is the storage structure, and this is this wooded, uh, open drainage stream area. Okay, this is the intersection of Lawrence and Arnold, there's a thirty-six inch culvert that goes kitty corner across the here, looking north on Arnold. Continuing, looking north on Arnold, moving south, um, this is where Annapolis Creek is on the ditch over on the right side of Arnold. Uh, there's some driveway culverts here, as you can see. These are the houses that are experiencing flooding over here on the west side of Arnold, particularly that one. And as you can see, its finished floor elevation is quite a bit lower than the other houses, so this house seems to be experiencing flooding as well as these other houses during some of the events that Shayna is now going to describe for us.
Thank you. All right. Um, so I'm Shayna, um, I'll be explaining the hydraulic model that we developed to help us understand how, understand the flooding in this system. Um, so, I'll be showing you, um, a model of the existing conditions first, to kind of show you what's happening out there now. Um, and then we'll go through some scenarios where we improve the culverts, and show you what happened, what, what that does to the flooding. Okay, so the animation's working, great. Um, I'm going to let this animation, um, play, it's gonna keep replaying, um, and then I'll explain it, uh, explain what's happening here. So, this is, um, the existing condition, um, the model, this is the downstream model boundary, so the Sinclair inlet, um, Bay Street is here, um, storage units are here, there's the parking lot, these are the houses that are being affected by flooding, and, um, what this simulation is doing is, um, is the upstream end of the, the model up here, um, we've got flow coming into the model here, and we've got the downstream, um, end is reflecting the tide, a tide cycle. So the flow is a, is a, there we go, the flow is a constant, um, forty CFS coming in, so that is not changing. Forty CFS is, uh, smaller than a two-year flood, so a two-year flood is a flood that has a fifty percent chance of happening in any one year. Uh, so this forty CFS is smaller than that, um, so relatively frequent. Um, and the tide is, um, a twenty-four hour tide cycle, it's, it's cycling through a twenty-four hour tide cycle, um, for, I think it's, uh, February third of this year, twenty eighteen. So it's just a, you know, I picked a tide cycle and put it in the model to see what would happen. Um, okay, so it's gonna restart. The flow, the tide starts low, it's going down right now, so it's on this end, so it's gonna restart, it's gonna come up, um, and then you'll see flooding starting to occur here. Um, it, it floods upstream and downstream of this driveway culvert right here, um, and kind of flows down the road into the low spot in the road, and then around, uh, houses. Uh, this cross-section is here, just upstream, um, Bay Street. So you can see what's happening as, um, as the animation rolls through, you'll see, you know, the, the water surface elevation come up here, this cross-section is right beside the houses. All right.
Change a slide.
Next slide.
There we go. Okay, this is a snapshot in time of, uh, the exact same simulation we just looked at, the, um, at the worst point in time. Um, so the rest of the slides we'll be looking at are snapshots in time, but they'll just have a different flow coming in at the upstream end, um, and a different tidal condition law, which I'll explain. Um, there we go. Okay, so this is the existing condition, um, as well, only with a different flow coming in, and a different tide condition. So the flow is now the hundred-year flow, which is the flow that has a one percent chance of happening in any one year. That is about two hundred CFS. And the tide is the FEMA base flood elevation, um, which is about, it's, it's about one and a half feet lower than, uh, the lowest point in Bay Street along here. Um, so, you can see the flooding, um, for a reference, uh, the, the water on Bay Street in this condition is about, is a few inches deep. Um, the, the water around the storage units is about one foot deep, the water in the parking lot is about half a foot deep, and the water near these houses is two to two and a half feet deep. Um, so the, the floodwaters kind of come out, like we saw, um, in the previous condition, they come out here, they kind of flow down the road, and, um, usually goes back into the creek, but in this condition, this culvert, um, is also causing some flooding, so it's, um, it's flowing out into here, and then out this way, and then just over Bay Street.
So this is the one percent chance.
Right, but, yeah, but this definitely happened, this has happened three times since I've been here in the last ten years, when we've had primarily king tides and heavy rain.
Okay, so what happens if we fix the culvert at, or the two culverts at Bay Street, the wooden culvert and that three-foot concrete culvert? Um, so what I've done here is I've replaced those two culverts in the model with a twelve-foot wide, five-foot-high culvert. Um, the existing culverts have a little bit of sediment in them, so I assumed that these have a little bit of sediment, or this culvert also has a little bit of sediment accumulation in it, uh, equal to about what's in, what's out there today. Um, and as you can see, so this is the same, uh, flow and tide conditions as we saw on the last slide, so two hundred CFS and the FEMA base flood elevation, um, tidal condition. Um, so you can see it's fixed the flooding on Bay Street, and it's fixed the flooding, um, near the storage units. Okay, so now we'll take a look at what happens if we replace both the Bay Street culverts and the culvert, culvert that, um, goes under Lawrence and Arnold Avenue. Um, so, this clearly shows that if you replace both of these, uh, so, uh, rewind a little bit, the, uh, I've replaced both of these, um, I've put in a twelve-foot wide, five-foot high culvert, so same, uh, same dimensions as today. Um, so, and now we've, uh, we've kind of fixed the flooding that occurs at the parking lot and in this general area, but we still haven't fixed the issue at the houses. Um, so this, this culvert is still causing some issues. All right, so then, you would say, well, what happens if we replace that culvert with a twelve-foot wide culvert? So that's what I did, um, and it, it does improve flooding, but it doesn't fix the problem. So you can see, this picture is not very much different than the last picture. Um, so for, uh, for some reference here, um, in the existing condition, um, if there is no tidal influence, so the tide's very low, this spot starts flooding, um, at about forty-five CFS. In this condition, with all three culverts replaced, and no tidal influence, this, um, culvert begins flooding at about ninety-five CFS, so that's approximately equal to the five-year flood. Uh, so it, it does improve, but it doesn't fix the problem.
What happened, and the tide?
The tide makes things worse, yes. All right.
So I guess the, the message of that is really that the tide is really affecting the flooding with the flow coming in, so fixing the culvert is, isn't going to affect the tailwater condition of the tide with the flooding, so.
Yeah, fixing the culvert at Bay Street and at Lawrence solves the problem at Bay Street and around the parking facility, but it doesn't really do anything.
And that's the part that's in the county, so.
Real quick, um, along with the hydraulic analysis, we also could look at geotechnical issues. Uh, no big surprise, the site is, is filled over beach deposits, over glacier till. I think the one, uh, issue that came up, and, and again, it's not a surprise when you have high water content, sand, we have liquefaction issue, which means under an earthquake, you can generate, uh, basically quick sand conditions, which will cause anywhere from twelve to twenty-four inches of settlement of the culvert, which means we really need to put the culvert on, the new culvert on fire, uh, or else it just has the potential to settle. Uh, structurally, we looked at a number of ditch, uh, concepts for the culvert, concrete, steel, arch versus box, and look, we have a slide coming up where, uh, we're recommending a, a concrete box culvert with an open bottom supported on steel pipe models. We also did a Phase One ESA, uh, we found out that the site was formerly occupied by a gas station or automobile service, uh, station. Um, when we did the geotechnical corings, we did not protect an order of petroleum products, but under the next design phase, we need to do a Phase Two evaluation to confirm that. There were no real issues with cultural resources, other than when we excavate, we'll need to monitor for, for artifacts.
So, some more detail on, okay, more detail on, um, the new culvert here on Bay Street, this is a twelve-foot wide, uh, culvert located, the invert, the outlet, located in about the same locations. Um, however, you know, the existing culvert is over here, so, um, that's that location. And then, uh, this is a structural section, uh, like Ken was saying, would be on pile supported because of the liquefaction issues. These will be precast concrete panels that will come in, uh, twelve feet wide, seven feet high, designed for fish passage. Um, okay, then we have alternative two, uh, for some improvements upstream, um, that would involve demolition of these houses that are currently flooding, relocating Arnold, essentially in the backyard of these houses at a higher elevation above the flood level, and then coming back here and looking at turning, uh, the existing right-of-way for Arnold into a potentially a stream channel corridor, uh, estuary situation for fish passage and, so. Ken?
Yeah, um, the other component of the project was interfacing our project with, uh, the, it's called the mosquito, um, trail and pedestrian trail. And in our area, you can, you can see here, we've got a portion of the, a wood bulkhead, and then it transitions to concrete. What they would like to do in this area is extend a pedestrian trail on the waterside of Bay Street, and the plans that were done, I think it's Johnson Associates.
Olson.
Olson, in about two thousand and nine, they're shifting Bay Street inlet a little bit, but they can't push it too far, so their concept was to create a cantilevered walkway, and what we were proposing is a new sheet pile wall driven behind the existing bulkheads, and to do a concrete cantilever slab over the top to pick up the additional room we need to get about a ten-foot shared-use path. Uh, permitting, want to say anything for Congress?
Sure. The thing that takes the longest is we're going to have the least amount of time. Uh, so, you know, permitting this project, obviously we're in the water, um, and we have state, federal, and local permits. Um, our goal here on this is to, is to keep the design within the realms of most of the programmatic permits, to keep the schedule, you know, on pace, um, and reduce the amount of time it takes to get through that process. Uh, we've, we've currently already met with Fish and Wildlife and, uh, with the tribe, and talked to them, um, and so we have some idea about what they're going to be looking for in the design, um, and moving forward. Um, and so, um, the biggest thing is, if you flick to the next slide, um, is that you can see that, that, you know, permitting is kind of controlling the schedule. Um, and so we anticipate it's going to take about a year. Um, if we, if we have to, if we get federal funding for the project, um, then we'll have to go through NEPA. If we have to go through NEPA process, you can add six months to a year on top of that, um, depending on the federal agency that you're dealing with.
Estimating the cost, uh, what we're calling alternative number one is just to replace the, uh, Bay Street culvert, and we're estimating, uh, direct cost to be about seven hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, and with about another three hundred and fifty plus or minus on indirect, creating the cost of about one point one million. Uh, the estuary restoration portion, which is buying the, uh, those houses and shipping Arnold Avenue to the west, we estimate that with indirect cost to be about another two million. And so, alternative number two, which includes alternative number one with the restoration, would be about three million dollars approximately. Uh, this is just more detailed summary, uh, of that slide, and it's included in your handouts. And then.
I know this is a lot of information in a very short time.
So what's happening to those homes right now when they're flooding? Do they have basements? I mean, are they actually literally flooding inside the home? Is it around the home? How are they dealing with it?
The, we only talked about actually one homeowner as part of our project, and he's, he's the house in the low spot that gets hit the worst. He has lived there for about twenty years, he said he's been flooded three times, and he said the water gets to about the level of his windowsill when he's living there.
And when I first came to the city, and this was after the two thousand and seven flood, which was about six months before I came here, or three months, no, six months, um, we had another flood where the people in that house, a number of people on the street actually contacted me, I said, hey, it's in the county, they contacted the county, the county said, hey, this is a FEMA issue, they ended up, it was in the Porter Street Independent, if you remember, there's an article, and then I think the, the homeowners actually contacted Washington DC FEMA, they were trying to get just help. So, as much as the estuary project is a very large project, the reality of it is, and that's why the narrative of this end result is so important, is that if we're going to just deal with the culvert, and deal with the structure and the utilities and the pathway, and just kind of fix that part of it, when we have a high tide, a king tide, and heavy rains, they're going to flood again, and we don't want them to think that this culvert's fixing it, we're going to, so we need to be very clear, the only way we're going to deal with the flooding is by working with the county, working with the state, FEMA, and actually, you know, doing an estuary project, you know, that's, that's the real solution.
So, quick question, so obviously we'd be buying those houses, this house would not be built there.
No, they, they look like that you're moving the road.
Yeah, they'd be, the houses would be removed.
So what would happen if you just removed the houses and left everything as is? And so in the event of that flood, what would, what would be impacted?
Well, the road.
Uh, yeah, the, the road, Arnold Avenue would be impacted.
Well, what depth is that flooding, I didn't hear that statistic?
The depth of flooding.
Arnold, so in that hundred-year flood, how, how deep does the water cross Arnold?
Um, it can get up to, depends on where you are, but in the low spot, it's about two, two and a half feet.
Okay.
There are holes to the north of the ones that flood, yes.
To the south.
South, they suck, south, yes. So, if we don't move Arnold, we just move those houses, there's still houses behind, and that didn't correct all of the flooding either.
And remember, it's not a city, it's a county.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, the issue, in that one slide where they were just showing the tidal influence on the existing, I guess the easiest way to think of that is, if they would stick their finger in that water, it'd be salty. I mean, it's not water coming down, it's, it's bad, so they're, they're built too low is the reality, so.
The roads are too low, the houses are too low.
Cities never do.
As I understand the flooding, have we talked to the county, or have you talked with anybody from Public Works about any of this?
Uh, back in two thousand and eight, when the lady, I was talking to somebody at the time, um, obviously, well, yes, we did have a conversation, the county actually went and did a project where they took that ditch and they kind of opened it up, and they put in some larger culverts, but the reality of it is, that's not the solution.
The, the way the county's been dealing with it is they've been basically excavating out the ditch, um, to, and then putting up some, you know, uh, sandbags and things along the side to keep the, try to keep the water into the channel itself. Fish and Wildlife's not really happy with the way the county's dealing with it, and they would like to see a long-term solution. Um, I think maintenance-wise, the county, you know, I'm not going to speak for the county, but they would probably like to see a, a long-term solution as well, um, without having to go and bang their head against the wall with the tribe and DFW every other year, basically.
So, yeah, so this is like a one solution, we, we can, you know, just fix what is the immediate concern that we have to fix, which is the integrity of the road, the integrity of the, the forest main, which that carries every drop of sewage that comes from the city. Those are our, like, key priorities. This other piece is more ancillary, but again, if you're really looking to correct a problem, I think it's worth at least trying to have a dialogue.
Well, it could be a phase two, I mean, it could be a second phase to this, as we pursue grants and some sort of, you know, like, ring with the county.
But this is a really good thirty percent design, there's a lot of data here, a lot of work. Like I said, this is just scratching the surface, but as far as the city and the county working together, the modeling, the permitting, there's a lot of information here.
Well, the economy of effort.
The challenges, though, too, we, we have a pathway project that we have funding for, and I'm hearing a year to a year and a half to permit this, but we, we've got to get out in front of this, because our funding. And I'm hearing a year to a year and a half to permit this for, we, we've got to get out in front of this because our funding, we gotta, we gotta build the project and, so I think it might be, it might be two, it could be ultimately two phases.
And we may end up building the pathway over this wooden culvert because we have strategically placed pile in the pathway project so that, in essence, we can remove a section and close the pathway down if we have to. So it's kind of the chicken and the egg. If this moved rapidly, then we would love to do them at the same time. If not, we'll end up doing the pathway and then this will come and retrofit that piece. So, that was part of our puzzle, was to make sure whatever we design can work with the Olson plan structurally.
So, really, the flooding only exists as long as the tide is high. Because once the tide goes out, then that water drains, is that correct? It, it automatically will drain?
Um, in the existing condition, if there's a hundred-year flood, there will still be flooding in some areas.
Because there's other culverts.
Once, once the, our projects are actually done, once the culverts are, the two culverts are put in, then that would drain out pretty quickly, is that not right? After the high tide starts to, you see?
It would drain out pretty quickly. Are you talking about replacing the Bay Street culvert and then the one upstream?
Right.
Yeah, the flooding would most likely, it would, the flooding would still occur at the houses, but it would, you know, as, as the flow's high and then as the flow goes down, it'll drain out, but.
So the one person who's lived there for 20 years has had a flooding three times and has continued to live there. Did he, when you spoke to him, was he interested in moving on?
Very much so.
Yeah, and I, and I've worked on projects where FEMA actually came in and they've had recurring basin flooding and they, they've not even given the option to people. They're like, look, we're not going to keep rebuilding your house down in the flood plain and they're required to move, so. So anyway, you know, this is.
Do we have any funding sources for the million dollars to?
Stormwater, too, absolutely.
Okay.
We just got to get out in front of it.
But we're also, we've been, Joe and I have been working on this for years. We've been pursuing, what was that group that, like, does make work?
Oh, Mid-South History Enhancement Group?
Right, so they actually have a, take projects on, get them designed, build them. So, you know, we're going to be pursuing any funding opportunity. And more than likely, this will be federally, there'll be federal money on it.
It's where your best opportunity for funding lies now, so.
But add a year to the project.
Yeah. That's why the, the Bay Street path has to be independent of this. And we've incorporated the design of the path into this so that they can be done differently.
I think we would at least want to move forward with design, do a hundred percent design. I think that makes our grant applications much more attractive versus wish and wish, you know, like, there's a design we're ready to move forward.
We just have to look at what design we're moving ahead with.
Yes.
And we don't have anything in the next millennium.
Depth of the county's here in the checkbook.
I welcome the opportunity to have further discussions like this. Is it complex jurisdictional boundary issues?
It is.
Okay, well, that's the presentation. I, I really appreciate the effort. I mean, this was a lot of work in a very short time and it's very comprehensive.
Pretty impressive that the pile is down to 40 feet.
One little quick comment on the cost assessment for the estuary restoration. The cost estimate does include personal houses.
It started at eight? It'll be 45 minutes. All right, thank you.
So I've learned something new.
Hi, thank you.
You started, you started the base sale. Well, we're welcoming back Commissioner Rito and Karen Goode and others from the county here to talk to us about the next steps in their community's assessment.
Yes.
The courthouse project.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for having us back again. This is a continuation of a conversation we started in August. Uh, we do have a slide deck that we'll try to gallop as soon as we can, just to remind all of your time. With me this evening is Commissioner Rito, of course, Angie Silva is one of our policy staff members, and Ron Thomas with Thomas Architecture Studio out of Olympia. So, the county and TASS, as we lovingly refer to them as, partnered up back in January to do a feasibility study of the county courthouse, which is a structure that dates back to the 1940s and has been kind of added on like Frankenstein's monster over the years. What we asked Ron's group to do, and they partnered up with HOK, that's a criminal justice consultant out of Chicago, is to do an evaluation of if we were to build a new courthouse, how big would it need to be, sized appropriately for growth factor to say 2040? And would that new building fit on what we're calling the existing super block? Sidney to Klein, Division to Taylor. And so, Ron's group interviewed the, the judges and the sheriff's department and the clerk's office and the law librarian and all the other residents that are currently in the courthouse to, to come up with four different options for building on-site on that super block. It was very important to us to be able to push this project forward on the super block because we wanted to try to minimize the cost of acquiring property. We didn't want to relocate off of the site that we thought was working for us and, and was part of the community. So, Ron's group came back and came up with four options, which we walked through in, in August. Since August, we've come up with a fifth design, or a fifth option, because when we went back and costed out the four options, one through four, our jaws dropped because they were fairly expensive. So, uh, we, we knew that we wouldn't be able to afford any one of the options that were, were listed, so we went back for a fifth option and did what we would lovingly refer to as a reverse engineer. If we had, say, 50 to 54 million dollars, what could we build? And so, that's what we're unveiling tonight is option five.
Thank you, Karen. I'm going to have a little assistance here on the PowerPoint as our clicker is not working. So, go ahead, let's get started, and I'm going to share each of the slides about 10, 15 seconds. And so, this is the program that we went through, and this is just a reminder of where we were at last time. Roughly 223,000 square feet as we project out 30 years. And the next slide, it shows in the lower left that we have 11 courtrooms currently. We have 14 judicial staff, so we really are short already. And if you've seen any of the courtrooms, they're substandard, most of them. And so, we project out 30 years to, to the need of 20 courtrooms. And so, we'll go to the next slide. And as we study the courthouse and all of the associated departments, we can't forget about the parking. It's woefully inadequate in the current condition. It's roughly, you can see in the middle of the slide, there are 532 stalls, but some of those are committed to jail services and as well. Some of those 532 stalls, they're needed for admin as well. So, at the bottom of the slide, this was studied both programmatically and from a code standpoint. You can see over 900 stalls are required. So we recognize that one of the first challenges of this project is to resolve the parking issue so it doesn't become an even worse issue for the surrounding neighborhood. And so that would be considered phase zero as addressing parking. Go ahead to the next one. And again, as a reminder, we studied four options. The first one on the upper left, that is, if you built it all at one time, a very tall building, but the nice thing is, it could be built in one phase. The second one in the upper right, that is a lower profile option where the building's only four to five stories and then only two stories along Division Street. Option three is a little different and it's a much wider footprint. That was proven to be not as functional as the other options. And so out of those first three, we developed a hybrid option four. And that one was six stories along Klein and then only three, two to three stories, yeah, on Division. And the idea was more needed to be built in that first phase so we could move people out of the existing courthouse. And then, once we demolished that, add the two levels of court administrative support along Division. Now, those are all considered program-driven options. And so, we literally price out as much program area as we needed for 30 years. That's ideal. Now, what we then did, as Karen outlined, was, okay, what if we couldn't? And then what we chose, you have to read the climate, the voting climate, because that would involve a public vote. And then the question was, well, what if we didn't? What if we did it internally? And that's where she comes up with the 50 to 54 million, that's the capacity. So we literally have to take that money and say, well, what else has to be spent? You have sales tax, you have, maybe there's property acquisition, you have furnishings, you have moving, and it just, the list goes on and on. Indirect costs. And you basically reverse engineer way down to, well, how much can we actually afford on a construction bid, which is just under 40 million dollars? And then, we figure out how much square footage can we afford to do that? And so that's what I'm going to show you here, is option five. Go ahead. Let's go ahead and go through these next ones because these are all option four phases. Go ahead. Phase two, stacking diagrams, these are showing all of the functions that were in phase four. And then, this is what it looks like on a site plan. Go ahead. This is what it looks like from Klein, so you can see the six and seven-story building. Go ahead. And this was the massing in the context of the existing. One of the major features of this, you'll notice Division Street is no longer open. This was very popular in that, and there's a lot of problems and difficulties in having Division Street open. And so, let's go on to the next one. This was the rating, so showing that the option four was the preferred option on the program-driven. Go ahead. Now, here we get to option five. And you'll notice, we show four phases, but notice the shape of this is very, very similar to option four. The L shape, the, the first phases are south of the existing courthouse and phases three and four are over the top of the footprint of the existing. Go ahead and go to the next. And so, this is the, the massing diagram showing what we would be building initially is roughly 12 courtrooms. And there's a couple especially hearing room, a ceremonial courtroom. And then even one of the top floors there, we actually have the Superior Court judges in the place of where our courtroom would be in the future. But this is, this is the first phase allowing Superior Court to literally move in, but there's enough courtrooms where District Court can use some of these as well. So both District and Superior Court would be using these new courtrooms. And it's designed in such a way that you have the clear separation of public in custody and then the circulation for the judges and the jury. They only meet when they get into the courtroom. So all, that whole pattern is being set up right with this initial phase. And then if you go to the next slide, there's phase two. You're literally adding eight more courtrooms in that second phase, very little site development. So, you're teeing this up for a very cost-effective second phase. And at this point, you have now provided all the courtrooms, 20, that you're going to need for 30 years in advance. But, during that phase one and phase two, notice that the existing courthouse is still in use. We are still circulating through the existing courthouse because basically where that courthouse is positioned is screening the future addition. So go ahead and go to the next slide. And this is now showing the, the now, in phase three, you're able to put in the final, basically, the northwest entry, lobby entry to the new courthouse. You have the west half of the court administration being built. And then you go to the next slide and that shows the east half of the court. Ideally, phase three and four would be done at the same time if the money was available to do that. Go ahead to the next one. This is the stack diagram showing all of the uses throughout. Go ahead to the next one. And I will point out, what we're trying to do in this phase one and two with the existing courtroom, we're trying to improve the conditions of each of the departments. So, District Court would move from first floor up to where the Superior Court was. Why? Because they, judges now have good direct access to the back of the courtrooms. Right now, they don't have that in District Court. So you're making a measurable improvement, more space for District Court. The courtrooms are larger, those Superior Court rooms are larger than District Court has. And then, each one of the departments, sheriff is getting more space. A lot of their detectives and whatnot, they're buried between the sheriff and the jail right now. No exterior windows at all, so we're trying to move them up in the facility. Family Services can come up the hill now to be a part of the rest of the prosecutors. Public Defense is nearly doubling their square footage. So we're doing all of this within the context of the existing egress patterns of the, of the existing courthouse. So, that's the pattern. They would stay until phase three, phase three and four. Go ahead to the next. And again, those are long-term stacking diagrams. Go ahead. Go ahead. And this is showing some of the improvements to the departments in the existing courthouse. The pattern of hallways remains largely the way it is now. Go ahead. The hallway on the second floor is actually improved. It meanders its way along the south wall. This is actually much more direct, taking people directly to the new addition. Go ahead. This is showing areas of the existing courthouse that would have minor improvements in green, major improvements are in red. Go ahead. This is the second floor. Go ahead. And this is the pattern on the site plan. You can just clip through these, showing how it would, phase one, the next slide is phase two, phase three, and then finally, phase four. Go ahead to the next one. And this is again, showing the site plan of all phases. So there are no compromises. It will just take time to develop this. Go ahead to the next one. And this is the section from Klein. And the dotted line, again, is the slope of Klein Avenue. Go ahead and show the next one. And this is after phase two. So the profile of this one is much lower than that option four. That one went up to six floors. This is only four floors and one of the floors is buried along Taylor and Klein. So the profile of this one is going to be much lower. Go ahead to the next one. And you can see, again, this is not architecture, it's just showing the massing as it's stepping down. So our feeling is that this is just more pleasant for the surrounding neighborhood as it transitions from the four floors down to the residential scale. Go ahead to the next one. And this is showing the massing, again, in the existing context. Go ahead.
How did you address the parking?
Okay, so, the parking, if you go to the south off of Taylor Street, the county owns a high percentage of those two blocks. And the idea is to radically improve the sur, do a surface parking lot. And if they can acquire some of the parcels, then that allows us, if you actually develop both blocks, now, this can be done over time, but you actually develop both blocks into surface parking, most cost-effective, I think, for the county, you could get over 400 parking spaces on those two blocks. It's significant. And we.
Additional parking lots?
There's two small parking lots that are on there, gravel lots. And so it would be fully developed with proper stormwater, proper landscaping, that type of thing. And then, we would probably develop a controlled southern entrance to the new courthouse so people that are parking in that area could go through, as opposed to going all the way around back to the Division entry. There are other improvements that are possible, but that is the best opportunity in the early phases. Go ahead.
So, the projected stalls need parking count for courthouse in 2030 is 920.
Correct.
What does that jump to with the admin and public works staff?
920, 920 is the projection for everybody, for the, for the campus, yeah. And I don't want to make it alarming, that's what the need is in 30 years. As long as we have a plan to get there, and I'll just describe, surface parking is the best solution. It gets us most, most of the way there. It gets us most, most of the way there. And then in the future, you can choose to do some decked parking. There are some lots off of Sydney, um, that are sloping. You could literally come in on the low side to one level and on the high side to another level. Very simple. Doesn't require a lot of internal ramping. So that's very cost effective and you just doubled your amount of parking. So.
Just for clarification, the, the number that I'm looking at is just nine twenty on this.
That's correct. Yeah.
And it was referring to courthouse staff, visitors and jurors at nine twenty.
Correct. But we are taking into consideration some of that existing parking would be utilized by the admin, by public works. So, um, there's, yeah. So we are trying to take into account the needs of the entire, uh, campus there. That's one of the things that's causing the shortfall right now is everybody sharing that parking. And, um, we are, uh, taking into account that we probably would not have parking on the east side of Klein as well. That had, that's one measure we could do for blast resistance to the courthouse. And I know you can't tell in these early concepts, but we purposely push the courthouse back away from Klein. So we have a nice parking strip, no parking, then sidewalk, and then a green space. And then finally, the building and the courts are actually on the upper levels. So all of those are measures to prevent blast resistance. Yeah.
I've already had two people come up to me talking about this project.
Yeah.
And the number one issue has been was the height of the building.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
Parking was the other, other issue and-
We look forward to the opportunity to, it's been premature to go out to the surrounding community. But in the coming year, that would really step up in terms of our availability, our transparency. Um, it's, uh, important to do these things at the right time. Don't get ahead of yourself. And so we're nearing that point, allowing the commissioners to make their decisions. And then we start our public outreach portion. But a lot of, a lot of decisions have been made, even though they might seem, they're not meant to be compromises. They're being, we're being realistic. If we can't do the one thirty-five, then let's figure out what we can do now. And I've only been involved in this for ten years. It's been talked about long before I ever started. And, uh, uh, all the commissioners, their first reaction, they just saw it less than a month ago, uh, and department heads saw it, um, was very positive in the sense that, well, if this allows us to get started, to stop just talking about it, to actually get started, they were, um, fully behind it. Um, and so the idea is that we master plan this in such a way that we actually prepare enough drawings where we're actually planning all four phases. And all of the infrastructure improvements, stormwater improvements, all of these type of things. And then eventually, we actually enter into a development agreement with the city, the county and the city, about what these improvements will be over time. So at each major gate, it's an agreement that says you will do these things. Uh, and then what the county gets out of that, they get commitment in terms of what are the civil improvements, uh, stormwater improvements, streets, sidewalks, that type of thing. Yeah.
Do you have the cost estimate for this, this plan?
Yes, yeah. What I'm showing you on the first phase, um, is targeting our budget. We actually made the building smaller, smaller to get to the twelve courtrooms. We have to make this first phase set up all later phases. And so I, I'm encouraged that we can deliver twelve courtrooms because the twelve plus we kept five in the existing. That means we went from eleven to seventeen.
So it's this total, I mean, you look at all four phases, we're back to that one thirty-five number roughly?
Uh, it would be more than that. Yeah, because anytime you extend something over years, the price of escalation is really, uh, hammering us right now and that would come into play.
How much savings could there be if you did phase one and two simultaneously?
Um, oh gosh, it would be millions. Um, and it would be primarily escalation. Yeah.
For us, it wasn't so matter of what we could afford. We have the bond capacity to do a hundred and thirty-five million. But what it boiled down to is what is our ability to repay the debt? So when we evaluated that, it, it was, no, let's chop this up into phases and be more methodical about it so that we can accommodate as old debt drops off and our debt capacity, or our ability to repay rebounds, then we can add on the subsequent phases. We know we're taking a risk. We know there's, there's price escalations involved. And the cost of construction is not going to get us any, get any cheaper. But we didn't want to get so far out that we hamstring ourselves in the future.
I was going to say, as part of our master planning, we will do cost estimating for each one of the phases. And we will balance the infrastructure improvements and then things like pilings. This phase one and two will likely be on pilings. We've been told about the poor soils, the gully that used to go through there. And so that's an example of one where we might do phase two pilings in phase one. We might do some other infrastructure and utility improvements. And what we're doing is we're buying down the cost of that later phase two. So that, as Karen describes, if in the future, five to ten years, uh, it, it's possible for them to then add on two. Well, now all of a sudden, phase three and four, you open up options for alternative funding for that. Uh, and so it's hard to predict what years that would actually happen. But at each stage, you're lessening the nut that is, that is phase three and four. And so I know the county's committed to fully replacing it. It's just a matter of, you know, funding and timing.
What would be the timeframe for construction phases? What my, what my real question is, is how disruptive is the neighborhood going to be for how long?
No, good question. Um, and so two thousand and nineteen, uh, would be full of a lot of planning, master planning, development agreement, acquisition of parcels, whatever they could acquire. And then the actual design of the parking lot improvements. Uh, two thousand and twenty would be the actual construction of the parking lot improvements before anything's happening with the building. And so two thousand and twenty is also when we're carrying on to later phases of the design. The county is deciding how they're going to deliver it. Is it design build? Is it design bid build? Those will be decided in two thousand and nineteen, twenty. And then ideally, you would actually bid it in two thousand and twenty well. And that's the year that you're finishing the parking lot improvements. So when the construction actually starts in two thousand and twenty, you litera, no, in, in, in two thousand and twenty, we would hope, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty, design of the building. So, yeah, you might be getting into twenty-one with the actual start of construction. But by this time, parking lot is constructed. And it would take roughly eighteen months to do all these improvements for the new phase one and the remodel of the existing courthouse. But you'll have places, you're going to displace over a hundred parking stalls, uh, on the south portion. We're eventually going to build back parking stalls between the new courthouse and the jail. Those are going to become secured parking for jurors, for judges, and maybe some electives. There's a limited number of parking. But then, uh, we'll be able to use all those new parking stalls. So the impact on the neighborhood will hopefully be very, very limited. And also, this is providing parking for all the construction workers. Um, they'll-
Then there's a, a window of time, which would probably be five years more before you can start the next phase.
Correct. And, and who knows when that is. But yes, yeah. So each phase, um, because of the way this was set up, you can imagine phase two is going to be very little impact on the neighborhood because you lay down on the side or in the parking lot that's directly adjacent, using it again, uh, for construction. So, um, yeah, that's, that's the approach.
Ron, um, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ron mentioned courthouse remodel, or remodeling of the existing spaces. And what his, um, plan has outlined is to do minimal remodeling. Yes. So as the new phase one opens up, you're going to be moving departments into existing spaces, trying to keep the remodeling to a minimum in order to make sure that we have more money aimed toward new construction.
Yes.
Ron, today met with, uh, with Nick and as well as the, uh, South Cape Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal, yeah.
And your building official to have conversations, to begin the conversations about what might the city, uh, want in terms of requirements if we were to go in and modify existing spaces. Uh, as, as Ron mentioned, we're, we just revealed, uh, this plan to the judges and to the other courthouse residents a couple of weeks ago, as well as to the commissioners. Commissioners are, are gathering comments from the judges and other court staff to see what the reaction is. And then, uh, we anticipate mid-December coming back with Ron and sitting down and deciding what the next steps will be. So a lot of what the next steps will be will be influenced by the further conversations that Ron has with the building official and, and the fire marshal.
The conversations today have been very productive and they've been very pointed. And it's good, uh, other three things they're requiring, two of them are already underway. Improving alarms, uh, improving exiting, exiting lighting. Um, and then improving the exited corridors is one of the things the building official and fire marshal are adamant on. And we concur. Um, and so, uh, those conversations are ongoing. And the costs associated with those. There's one last slide, I believe. Yes, go ahead.
What is the impact on the citizens? How are you paying for it? What's going to be paid for?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that you're borrowing.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Magic County checkbook. Uh, we'll be going out for bonds, issuing bonds, and then using REIT proceeds, real estate excise tax proceeds to make bond payments. And we anticipate it being a standard twenty-five, thirty-year.
Just REIT?
Just REIT. REIT and, and if, uh, if we have, depending on how things shake out in our planning process, we may be able to use some fund balance.
So no, no increase public?
No rates taxes?
No.
No.
That's why they went, uh, five.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Again, we could have, we, we could have gone out and issued bonds for a hundred and forty-three million, but we just, it, it felt uncomfortable to us. We didn't, we wouldn't be able to continue with county operations and guarantee that we have enough money to make that bond pay.
Good questions.
Other questions? And so what you see on the slide now, those are just our next steps that we'll be going through. Kind of commissioners go, no-go decisions. And then, uh, continuing on with, it's called detailed programming. The, the blocks that you saw, they're, they're blocks of areas for departments to make sure we had enough square footage, correct courthouse. But we have to transition that now. And what exactly are we doing for every department? How do they fit into the existing courthouse? What's in the new? Um, and then that turns into schematic design, a master plan, again, for all four phases. And then ultimately, a, a development agreement between the county and the city. Once the, the framework of that is in place, then the commissioners can make a decision on then how to proceed with the rest of the design. Yeah.
Questions?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody for coming.
Our pleasure.
I think this is a, another important shared project. So it's important that we, we keep it fun. We hear what you have to say.
We look forward to coming back in future months. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernestine Judge Tiffery and Sharon Ellis are important as to stay with us tonight. Talk about our next item. So we want to talk a little bit tonight about the community service program. Um, we, our budget is pretty well baked. Uh, and, but, uh, here, just before I left town on vacation, uh, Trish, uh, from KCR came to us. And, uh, we're currently spending about forty-eight thousand dollars on our current community service program. Uh, KCR, uh, came to us and that's really what we programmed in the budget. Not, and not much of an increase, but forty-eight grand is what, for the program that we have. Uh, KCR manages it. We own a van. Um, and, uh, the folks, uh, go to our court. Um, they're given an altern, an alternative to paying their fines to commit, to, to perform community service. Uh, they have to travel up to KCR, um, sign up for that, uh, for a time slot. And then travel again to KCR to, you know, be picked up by that van, go out, do that service. KCR, uh, has some costs, associate overhead costs and, um, benefit costs are increasing. They're asking for a twenty percent increase to about sixty thousand dollars. Um, if you look at the, in here, um, the statistics, the program isn't being, um, very well utilized. Uh, and, um, we've, we've got, we think we know the number reason why I don't, as it, I guess over the week before I left town, about four different times, we discussed this. And I flipped back and forth, were you just pull the plug on this or not? And, uh, Sharon and Tim are here to talk about, Public Works likes it, the program, because we're getting things done in our community, um, that otherwise our Public Works staff would have to do. And, uh, I think we have a solution, but we just want to talk a little bit about the benefits of the program and why do we want it? The court feels it's important to, to continue it then. There was a recent court decision that Tim can speak to as to why it's important for us to keep it. So that.
Well, you can see that, I mean, just to start, that it's, the historical statistics have been going down and down and down and down over time. And there's some question as to why that's happening, but, um, that's an interesting phenomenon. But the, we, we have been pushing it, I've been pushing it quite heavily for people to utilize it. And I think I spoke to you, I believe I talked to you a little bit about what's going on in the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court, basically about, um, monetary dependence fights. Is that the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court especially have been basically saying that courts should be imposing fines on indigent. And it's, there's very valid and very important reasons why they are making those decisions. But it is taking that, you know, normal court process and, and taking it all away. I mean, in the past, you had, we either give somebody a jail time or a fine or some combination of those. I'm up there doing pro temp judging sometimes up in District Court and imposing zero days and zero fine on cases because the, for a driving while license suspended, the zero is the normal, um, court imposed jail time because it's just, because it's a driving while license suspended. It's based on them not paying some traffic offense. Maybe if it's a third degree and, uh, and then if they're indigent, then they're not imposing any fines up there. So it's zero days with zero fine.
So no consequences to driving without a driver's license?
Yeah, basically. Um, with the community service program here, I have felt that I have been able to continue to, you know, I am, when I first came on, the fine for, or the usual sentence for driving while license suspended was zero days and a six hundred dollar fine. And that was what was being imposed before. People who were probably paying four and six hundred dollars. So when I came in, I thought, well, uh, it should be something more than zero and something less than six hundred. So I was imposing three hundred at the beginning. And, uh, then it was kind of the more I'm looking at how the Court of Appeals is looking at things, um, that I am not even imposing that much. But with the community service program, I can feel like I can impose something because the people have an option. If they're having difficulty paying on that fine, that they can do community service. And if somebody comes in and they are indigent and they are incapacitated or they can't go out and do work, then I'm giving, I'm doing zero fine. I mean, I'm not imposing a fine. But if I think that they're, that community service is an option that they could take advantage of, then I am imposing a fine. Now, it's obvious that people aren't necessarily taking advantage of that, uh, of that situation. And I can remember when I was in the prosecutor's office for years and you'd be talking to a defense attorney about, um, how much the fine should be. I'd be like, well, you know, are they not going to pay five hundred dollars or are they not going to pay a thousand dollars? I mean, because they're not going to pay whatever it is. So it's kind of, you know, a situation where it's like, um, Mary indicated over the past couple of weeks when we've talked about it. It's like, is this a program that's important or not important? I mean, is it, is it, is it something that we should just pull the plug on or is it something that we should continue? And I think that, talking to Sharon, and she can talk a little bit about this, is just as far as what pulling the plug on the system would create for us is me having to follow more strictly the model of what's going on at the District Court of basically not imposing fines. And, uh, and at all. And, uh, and then the other thing is like yesterday, I, I sentenced a, a guy to ten days in jail. And he had credit for one day, so he ends up having to serve nine days. But rather than serve the nine days, he wanted to do community service. So I said, sure, that's great. So hopefully, he's going to be one of the statistics on this. So hopefully, he's going to be one of the statistics on this, on this in the future. And maybe he's going to actually do the nine days in community service. Now, that's, there's no guarantee of that. But that was an option that he couldn't afford to pay the home monitoring fee, that he could have got home monitoring, or jail. Jail, home monitoring, or community service. Up in district court, there's, it's jail or home monitoring. And people who are indigent who can't afford to pay for the home monitoring, then they do the jail. Here, we have the option of them to do community service. And some people take advantage of it. Not nearly enough, but some people do. And that's probably something that I should push as far as the jail time more than I actually have in the past. So that's kind of how it's utilized by the court, is it's utilized so that we are making some, hopefully making people so that they don't want, you know, making it hurt a little bit. I mean, but not nearly as bad much as it was prior to me coming here. And it was, the standard fine was eight hundred and fifty dollars for most cases and six hundred dollars for a driving while license suspended in the third degree. And it's considerably less now.
So another piece to this equation too is, if you look at this, there's a chart with the fines. And you can see that to date, this, in 2018, we have received three hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of fines. If we pull the plug on this program, a lion's share goes, that revenue goes away because Tim can't impose the fines. So that, that-
Because he doesn't have the option.
He doesn't have an option.
Right, because I don't have an option that I feel is appropriate. It's kind of a sticky situation, it really is. Because Court of Appeals is, is making it clear that indigent people should not be saddled with fines. And I'm imposing fines, but I'm giving them the out for community service program. Many people don't take advantage of it. Some people pay their fines, some people don't, most people probably don't, and some people do.
So, no, what I was hearing, I'm just trying to get my-
So I got another, another step.
Go ahead.
Another step to it, and I've got to answer your question. So, and talking to Sharon, I think we're losing some of these folks when they leave here. So the solution, I think we've come up with, and if this doesn't work at the end, I mean, six months or a year from now, we could end up, this doesn't work, and it's still not working, nobody's utilizing it, and we pull the plug on it. But I think Public Works sees value in it because we're getting work done in the community. And the court sees value in it because we're giving an alternative to folks. The court, if the court managed the calendar for these folks, so the judge imposes, they, they off, they say, yes, I'd rather do the community service. Now, instead of being sent to KCR, I'm going to front counter here and Sharon and her staff, okay, so here's the next sixty days. When are you showing up? Okay? And they're going to sign up for their, their day to do their community service. And they're going to report probably to the flagpole out here, out in front of City Hall versus having to somehow get to KCR, which isn't in the city, and by the way, they didn't have a driver's license, and probably shouldn't have been driving there anyway. So one, they go over there to go get, you know, signed up, and then two, they have to go back and to get in the van and to do the service. So now we've kept it here at, at City Hall. We're hopefully going to be a little more successful getting people to participate. So currently, KCR has probably, you know, we've gone through a few people in this program that are, that are managing this program. We have a very good one right now. When we don't have a good one, many days, this person doesn't have anybody. And I believe in the past, I would get, well, I know so because I would get phone calls. Why is your commu-, you know, you've got the city van and I get a phone call, and why is it out in McCormick Woods hiding in bushes? So they were playing hideout because they didn't have anything to do. The person that we have in this program right now, he shows up, nobody shows up at KCR, and first phone call he makes is to Bill Thiele or to Tony Lang. Okay, what are you guys doing over at Public Works today and what do you need me to do? So he's, he's kind of, becomes a Public Works employee right now. We're getting value for work, and then some days, he's got people with him to help do that work. So we can't afford to continue the status quo with this program and pay sixty grand to KCR to do this. So you've authorized in the budget a sixty percent parks person. Provided we can come to an agreement with the union to create this position, I would propose that we make that sixty percent position a full-time position and take the resources we were going to give to KCR, which looks like we're, you know, we're saving money. But as Rebecca Nichols, who's much smarter than Noah and I and really runs the finance department, she's the assistant finance director, pointed out, we, this is, these are general fund dollars, and the benefit cost is probably revenue neutral, but we preserve the program and we hopefully get people utilizing it and outdoing work in the community.
So you're saying basically greater participation by keeping it local?
I hope so.
Yeah.
Like, I'll tell you in six months or a year whether we're, whether we're successful or not. But I would like to, to even, to take that parks position that you guys have talked about. Add these responsibilities to it, talk to the union about it. We also wanted that person to do meter reading. So right now, you, you can sign up any day of the week. We're going to be a little more structured in this and, because we can't have somebody doing community service, riding along, reading water meters. So there's going to be, we know though specifically, a whole year out, what day we read those meters. So we're going to do some scheduling there, and it's probably three days a week, we're going to offer this community service in blocks of time. And he's going to show up here and hopefully pick those people up with that van. If they don't show up, then just like he is today, pretty much, he's going to become, he's going to be working with our Public Works Department doing park stuff. Hopefully, he's got a group of people with him that is out helping him pull those weeds, emptying trash cans, and those responsibilities that we were talking about.
So my, my question was though, is what I was hearing was that with, if Tim, we don't have this program, essentially, we're going to lose fine revenue.
Correct.
And, and losing work. So there's a, there's a very valid reason to have the program because it gives you all options in the court and it gives us options for getting work done in the city.
Absolutely.
Well, and even, it's revenue neutral, so even in the event nobody shows up, our ability to have accountability over those additional hours to put that person, it's great that this person is, is so gracious, but that can shut off tomorrow as well versus if they're employees of the city.
Correct. And we're tracking the number that we're referring because this number is not accurate on this paper. This was done by, by who is in charge? And that's the number of people that showed up to do it, not the number of people that we sent there.
Right. They have a much higher number that they're referring. He's tracking, his, she's tracking who showed up. So if, with your, I mean, later in the agenda, we've got budget discussion.
So we've got a budget right now for sixty percent park employment. And we have in the budget four and eight thousand for KCR. So we would take that forty-eight thousand and ask what we would pay his benefits with.
And additional salary.
And assume that we get more work after.
We, we also, yes.
And Tim can go back to the higher fines and maybe, maybe more inclined to show up.
Or at least impose fines.
Right, impose something, yeah.
Right.
So how long do the folks normally have to look off time?
Sixty days.
Sixty days?
But they can-
They can get longer if they need to.
And if, if they come in and, and they've done thirty of the, you know, let's say they've been asleep to eighty hours and they've done fifty others, then we'll give them another two months to do the rest of it.
Is there like a ratio you use if it's a five hundred dollars like per hour?
It's eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour is what they, is what they get off of their. And it's, and it's eight hours for eight days worth of jail. So the guy that I talked about who gets ten days of, of jail, but he's doing eighty hours.
Which is also saving us eighty dollars a day to go to jail. That's an expense. Ninety plus now.
It's going up again, really.
But if someone's indigent, then where do they stay when they dream? I mean, how does that work?
What's, what's that?
If someone is indigent, which is your whole point, then how, how do they, where do they stay to come back to do the service every day?
Well, that's where crime pays, if you're indigent, crime pays.
I would say, yeah, they would take your jail time and make it free. I would make, because they can, they would get housing.
You can see though-
It doesn't solve all the problems.
It does, it does. You can see though that-
It's a balancing act. It is a definite balancing act. And like I said, if there, if it's somebody who is truly, it, it is just, this is just, isn't going to work, then I'm imposing zero fines. I mean, if it's just, if it's just, this is not going to work, this is not going to, they cannot do it, they cannot make it work, then they're getting zero fines.
Hopefully, that's the exception.
Right. And that's the, you know, and that's the balancing act that you have to go through.
So I'm curious, when they are busted for driving without a license, are they typically also without insurance?
Typically, yes.
So then they have another ticket on top of that.
And that's five hundred and fifty dollars. That's the, and often, they will not even come in for a mitigation hearing or anything on that. They'll just add it to the list of, of things that they owe. So, yeah, it's a, it's, you know, it's always been a downward spiral. And I think that the, the courts are trying to get a handle on it, but as everything, it's a pendulum that swings sometimes too far one way and sometimes too far the other way. And it's trying to get that pendulum somewhere in the middle is where we're trying to end up in the end. But, you know, going, it used to be that everybody would find them, who cares whether they paid or not, and then people would never get the license back ever. And now it's, it's just scot-free for anything you do, and that's not teaching anybody anything.
Give them a hug and send them home.
Yeah, and so it's, it's trying to get somewhere in the middle is where, is where we need to be. And that's where, that's where this community service gives us an option that's somewhere in the middle that, that, that no way you can utilize it.
Any concerns or objections? Okay, so I'm sorry to bring this into the budget process so late, but it got sprung on us.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I would like to, if we could, jump to item six. The chief came in his uniform and we'd like to jump him to, get him, get him back out on the street or wherever he needs to be. So Mark's got a number of parking changes that we'd like to talk about this evening, and one of them involves Edda Turner Park and some activity that's there, and that's why the chief's here. So Mr. Dorsey, if you want to run through those.
Yeah, so, so if you can take your packet and if you could just first, go to the draft ordinance and set it, set it to the side. Page. So start where it says ordinance oh thirty-five eighteen. I think it's going to be easier to do it this way. And stick that to the side. And what we'll do is, so in the, in the executive summary-
Stick the draft ordinance to the side?
Yeah, yeah, put it to the side so that you can flip through it. Because I'm going to go through that.
Draft ordinance begins on page one sixteen.
One sixteen, okay.
Okay, so there's, the executive summary said there were three items. There's actually six. So what we'll do is, so if we go through the draft ordinance in section ten, twelve, five hundred, so you go to the next page, so you'll see Bay Street. Okay? And that says, in the draft ordinance, it says, on the south side of DeKalb Street, a hundred and thirty foot east. That's parking prohibited at all times. So let's talk about that one first. So then in your packet, you're going to see this photo. That basically shows, so this came in as a public complaint. So when people are leaving the, mainly the county at night, they come down, they, they come down Klein, they turn onto that, where the triangle is on the Kits app, there's only room for two cars, it backs up. So a lot of them come down to Cowell. Up higher by the homemade cafe, they come down, they come down next to Hollins Sons. They're looking to try to turn out and they can't see because there's cars parked in front of Hollins Sons. So that came as a Public Works complaint. We're now on notice, we did a site distance survey and we found out that we have to eliminate parking, basically in front of Hollins Sons. And so this is kind of a no-brainer. We really, this isn't where we have much of a choice. It's just, it is what it is, came in as a complaint. So that's what you're seeing here in this first one is-
Hey, Mark, before we leave that one, have we talked to the business owner and then-
I talked to both Valist and Hall and told them to come here tonight.
Okay. Because it's displacing parking in an already tight area, especially deliveries are being made.
Yeah, there's a lot of parking there that has like cars that are there for a really long time, like years. And so there, I think they're just going to manage theirs, themselves. But again, I don't think we have a lot of choice, and I think we just have to prohibit the parking. It's up to that pole in between Valist and Hollins Sons. And then there's room for a couple of spots there, and then you run out of parking, so.
In the act of site distance, that's how you're going to make it left or movement.
I'm doing it all the time.
Yeah, if somebody pulls out there at this, like tomorrow, and got T-boned after we said, no, we're not going to fix it, we'd be like really screwed. So like I said, this one's pretty straightforward. The next one is you go into section two, which goes into ten, twelve, five-
Did you say the page number?
I don't. So we're, we're now, we're moving to section ten, twelve, five sixty. Okay, so this is parking time limited in certain streets. So what that says, this is ancillary to what we just did, so.
Page one twenty-one.
So we, first we did in the previous section, we said there's no parking in front of Hollins Sons, but we're still allowing that parking like from Valist up. So this is changing how that was worded because it was on the south side of Port Orchard Boulevard, DeKalb Street and a hundred and thirty foot east of DeKalb, two Kits app. So it's basically just saying that you can, you can still park in front of the, across from the DeKalb Street Pier for four hours. So against, these two sections of code just have to be modified together. So that we're still establishing where the four-hour parking is in front of Valist and across from the DeKalb Pier. And then we're just restricting that piece. So that's really what those first two changes are. So as you continue through the ordinance, the draft ordinance, and you're going to get up to ten, twelve, five eighty, which is section three.
Eighty-one, twenty-nine.
Thank you.
You're awesome, Scott.
Okay, so this is getting into where we're describing. So go to the next page, and there's actually three on this page, so we'll go through quicker. The first one is what I'm going to be doing, and this isn't in your, because this came like last minute. We realized with our three parking spaces, we're, we're going to hearing for the Rockwell Pocket Park. We've, with the police department and all of our parks, we have typical language that says from dawn to dusk. And it's limited to two hours for park parking. We have it at Van Zee, we have it at McCormick. It's just so that at night after dusk, the police can come up and chase somebody out of Paul Potter's Park. And so this was like an aha moment. You know, we had all this stuff that was going to go and get all corrected at one time, and I went, oh, well, we're going to have this issue. I'm just going to have to come back again. So I'm just going, I'm telling you that I'm adding in the draft that I actually sent to Janine that isn't in the work study packet, but is in the packet that was already set for the twenty-seventh, is that I've added a section I, which is Rockwell Pocket Park, which will basically say, you know, two-hour parking from dawn till dusk.
Would that park when they're currently below or above the local?
But we will, might as well just get it in the ordinance now. The next one is the one that K, that you see is Edda Turner, I'll skip by that very quickly. And then I'm going to go down to section ten, twelve, six forty. This was last year when we had the issue with the people that were parking on the street with their utility trailers. We forgot to add a violation. So all we're doing there is we're adding the infraction language so that we can actually add violations. And then there was one other quick parking issue that came from a citizen where, that was on Tracy. And I don't, is this one in your packet? And then there was one other quick parking issue that came from a citizen where, that was on Tracy, and I don't, is this one in your packet? Yeah. So basically, the request was to eliminate parking in front of one house. And it went to the land use committee, and we said, "Nah, it doesn't make sense." We went out and we drove Tracy at night, and we found out that, we don't have, it isn't like Perry Avenue where you got people parking. There's not an issue. The simple solution to this, cause the reason that the stuff in yellow is in code was for the high schoolers that were parking. And that, that corrected that problem. The blue is in front of that duplex where there's two four hour stalls, kinda random. So the simple solution, and since Tracy really is kind of a primary, it's no route, it's a, it's a primary neighborhood collector, and it's our detour route. Our simple solution is, I had Mark Forni go out, and we can actually just put fog lines on it. And by putting fog line on it, it will, there's still two or three spots that are kind of these kinda off, outside the fog line gravel areas where we have the two hour signs up. So there's really nothing to do per code, and we can resolve this gentleman's issue simply by adding it to our striping list. Cause this one particular house they're talking about, there's no, it goes right from the edge of the road down into like a gully and it comes back up, so. To me, this is a very simple solution to this one issue. So that's that one. This is the one that the chief's gonna talk about. Oh, and, and this is just kinda more clarification. There was an email that came in that had to do with Orlando, and I just wanted to once again reiterate that we solved that solution by putting a fog line on the north side of Orlando. The issue is, some people think that sidewalks have to be concrete to be a sidewalk, and that's not the case. The sidewalk that was constructed of the pedestrian pathway from Horseman Heights on Orlando on the north side down to Olney was a road with a thickened edge, and then it was a paved, it's a sidewalk. But you had a lot of shipyard workers that used to just park along there. So we put a fog line there, and then some people parked up over it, and they're parking now half on the road, half on the walk. And they're getting a ticket, and so they complained about it. I sent a response back to that woman. I haven't, this is what John brought up last week and wanted to address. So, as far as I'm concerned, I haven't heard back.
That's her, Mark's response.
In red. So, we've, my, my responses were pretty cursed. They were not unprofessional, but they were pretty just very factual. So, to the point. Okay, so, the chief, he's here because we had a, a land use committee, we've had issues with increased activity at Editerner Park. I know that in our landscape maintenance, we've, we're finding needles, we're having all kinds of issues down there. We recently cut shrubs down to three feet, we've cut trees up to six feet to open things up. We thought it was pretty straightforward, because if you look at this drawing, you'll see that there's a line, that's the Blackjack Creek Waterway, that's public right of way. So everything from that in is our public right of way. As you get kinda out of the picture at the Key Bank, we have a lease for the bank parking that's in that right of way. Everything else is West Bay Center parking. And so, we thought it was a pretty much a slam dunk to just say, "Hey, it's never been in code." So if you go back to that section, uh, ten twelve five eighty, we never had a Editerner park. It was never in code. We never had dedicated parking.
So the situation we have is, the chief and police would like to, um, they have difficulty patrolling that area because cars are, are seeing that area. They want, they're increasing the police activity there to deter the drug and alcohol and other issues that are undesirable in the park. We have a, a, an agreement for, for an easement that we got from Bob Hampton, and we have an agreement with him that states, uh, is that in the packet, Mark?
Yeah, it's in the packet. It's in the.
Did you read that?
Yeah, reciprocal use four point two. It says, "The city shall continue to allow the owners, shall continue to allow the owners, customers, to use the city's parking area dedicated to Editerner Park." Well, that doesn't exist. When the owner's parking lot is full. So that's saying, when all of West Bay is completely full, then you can park there along Editerner, except that was never dedicated in code or by signage.
And the parking lot is not full.
In the parking lot is not.
So, Bob is pointing to that, and we've never, in our code, defined that parking.
Now there's.
Or any parking stalls along there. If we're going to enforce parking along that curb, we need to define it and probably create the stalls.
And the stalls that are out there now are, they'll go, "Hey, there's two stalls there now." Well, those are just temporary. We laid those out to see how they would fit, so that if somebody did come in through Bob Hampton's West Bay Center, how they would get in, and then get back out with going up to Slaughter House and trying to do a turnaround and come back.
So we know there's insufficient room through the Key Bank exit, and we feel that that should for sure get, you know, a rent curb on it. We think we should create some parking, define some parking, outline in our code. The chief's request is not to have parking down by Slaughter County at the end where there really isn't probably room to turn around within our right of way.
And we know.
A lot of pushback from the owner of Slaughter County that it's going to impact his business, he believes. Bob Hampton wants to be supportive of the police department and their ability to police this, but he also has a tenant there that he, you know, so he's, he's pointing to this agreement, and he doesn't feel that we should limit the, the parking there. He says pretty strongly about that. And I just want the chief to talk a little bit about, about what's been happening down there, what they're doing, and what the rule is requesting.
Well, I think this is somewhat a result of the better policing we've done down on the waterfront, mainly down where the Veterans Wall is, the playground, been a lot of changes down there. In the past, before the improvements down there, it was really quite a big hangout and a lot of smoking in that, um.
Pavilion.
Grandstands.
Grandstand area, people hanging out in the grandstand area. You couldn't see them from Bay Street. Um, it was, it was like a good hiding place. And for the police officers to get down there and actually see what's going on, you'd actually have to drive clear down in there, which they see you coming a mile away, obviously. But with the improvements, and there are great improvements down there, the park, there's, it's frequented more often by families and kids. So that helps, keep some of that element out of there, because they don't wanna be seen. Then, the Coop de Grau was my board officer at the time, worked with Board Grimerton, had all those bushes cut down so that you could see from Bay Street. It's much more open now. And it's not a hotspot for this type of criminal activity that we're starting to see over at Editerner Park now. I got a public request the other day from Kitsap Sun regarding how many reports have been taken down there since June.
At Editerner Park.
At Editerner Park. And Cindy Sersely, my office manager, told me there were twenty-eight reports. They're, they're, everything from drug abuse, um, drunks, fights, assaults, that type of activity. We've had projects going on down there all summer long, mainly because there's a certain element that is decided that that's a good place to hide. And what they do is, they pull in there with a car, and a lot of times there's a trailer behind the car, and it's, it basically blocks your view. And so you get, you park right next to the sidewalk, they take over the sidewalk. I've been down there myself, um, when we get shorter, I've been down there. When I went down there, there were people inside this trailer, there were people outside the trailer, there was a guy laying across the sidewalk, he was intoxicated. Obviously, we're finding a lot of drug paraphernalia down there. We do get calls through the businesses. Like I said, we have been doing projects down there to try to do everything we can possibly do, including getting home. Some of these homeless people, the woman that lives out of her trailer, you know, some housing, and she turned it down. Um, but it's just a hotspot. And I think with the improvements of the, the boardwalk, and it's gonna come across the bridge that goes over where Blackjack Creek empties out, that's all gonna be right connected there, and there's a lot of foot traffic. But I guarantee ya, there's, there's not a lot of people that wanna walk through an area where there, have a big vehicle on one side and just this short grassed area on the other side, and some people that obviously, um, aren't there to enjoy the park, they're for some type of nefarious activity. And it's, it's been a problem. And, and when I tell you, we had, like, I think it was twenty-eight reports since June, we don't take reports every time we go down there. You know, the police officers, a lot of times, will stop, and, and the times that I were, I've been there, I think it's probably four or five times, talking to these people, making people get off the sidewalk, you know, get back in their vehicles, or, you know, so they're not blocking the sidewalk. There's no report on that. I mean, there's reports when we have criminal activity. So, you know, you could pretty much triple, or maybe even quadruple the number of times, especially since we've been really working hard on that area. But my main concern here is, I don't see that as a necessary parking area. I really don't. There's lots of parking there, and if, um, the owner of the, the business lots there, Bob Hampton, I guess it is, if he's concerned that these people are gonna start parking in their parking lot, we can deal with that. I can't deal with, you know, five or six cars blocking in that park where we can't see. But if, you know, if they try to move over into his lot, and they're not patrons of the business, that can be dealt with. We deal with that all the time. I just, for me, I just have a lot better comfort level, safety-wise, if there wasn't this sanctuary where they could create and operate without our approval.
I think the chief makes a pretty good case. On the other hand, I think in, in the spirit of the agreement that we entered into Bob for the easement, I think we do, do need to create and define some parking there. You know, and I think Public Works is, is a two.
Two.
Two or three stalls. There's at least two stalls we can, we can, within our right of way, pull in there, exit those stalls through the existing drive aisles. But, um, I think the chief makes a pretty compelling argument from a public safety standpoint, why, um, you know, we probably shouldn't have parking at the other two ends.
If I heard Mark writing, the way it was laid out originally, it was for overflow parking for people that were, um, patrons of the businesses.
Correct.
So, I mean, we don't, we're not trying to prevent people from parking there to go to those businesses.
And. Some of those businesses are, are day businesses only.
Yes, they are.
They're, they're parking in front, there's plenty of businesses for the two establishments at either end, you know, that, they've got plenty in the middle. And I would say, just from a, a looking at the spot and watching the traffic flow, uh, from the night of the, the bond levy, parking on there is, is very unsafe.
Yeah.
From, from that driving side, even before the, the items you're talking about.
Well, even if you look at the very end, where we have the railing for the pathway project, that was hit a number of times. We finally had to put a Jersey barrier, cause people backing out of the Slaughter County that might have had too much to drink, or were running into it. So, I don't know why somebody would wanna have cars parked along there anyway. So, the wording that we've got in the draft ordinance is, is basically it's limiting the two hour parking, and again, it's from dawn to dusk. So even those two stalls after dusk, nobody can park in there, cause that gives the police that opportunity to come up and say, "Hey, you're not, you shouldn't be here. What are you doing sitting in your car at ten P M?"
Love it. Thanks, Paulie. Well, we've spent a lot of time, I just saw, yeah, not to beat it, of course, there's plenty of parking in front, cause those are day businesses.
And there was an issue they, at land use, they discussed that, well, there isn't adequate lighting, people don't wanna park there. Well, again, that's not a city issue. That's up between Slaughter House and West Bay Center. You know.
It's a lot better than over buddy, but.
So we've done all that we can do. We've limbed up, we've cut down, no parking along there's gonna make it much easier to place.
All right, so Mark's plan is to bring this back next week for adoption. Most likely get the public here from those business members at that meeting, so, preparing for that. Noah has the farthest drive of anybody in the building, and he has two items on here, and they're very quick. So I would propose that we, uh, yeah, get Noah going, get him rolling on the road here. So if we could go to item five, which was the dispersment policies.
Same, same in there for last.
We'll be in my debt, and I like that.
Yeah, I just had to, we just heard this at Finance Committee tonight.
So, thank you.
You guys taking a break or something?
Yeah. Back on number five.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, first of all, appreciate it very much, Mayor, for waiting me on agenda. It's like you got a lot to drive, so, this is actually pretty awesome. So the first item here is talking about accounts payable and dispersment policy. So I handed out, uh, council members' resolutions, that would lay out the policy which companies have painted. And then the last page is, uh, three-page packet is actually a diagram of the processes that we go through in accounts payable. So if you had a chance to read, uh, the executive summary on it, um, what we have here is every, every year, a couple months, I come to the council and ask for temporary authority to release payments, uh, when there's a council, council meeting. And then we come back to the next council meeting with the whole report of our vouchers and payments, and council takes action to approve our payments and claims. So we talked about this a couple months, I think, all the way back to July, we talked about, is there a better way to go about this from a business side and to address this kind of continually reauthorizing some temporary authority? So I put together, uh, with the help of staff, is, um, a resolution and policy that is consistent with the State Otters Office for best practice on how to handle your internal controls and for releasing payments and meeting expenditures. Yeah, that's one I found right there.
Yeah.
And so that's what you have here, is a policy that would delegate to the finance department to be able to make payments on a business need, ensuring all the same internal controls remain in place, and that we would bring them back, uh, within thirty days of issuing a payment to the council for approval of that payment. So for tonight, um, those are the high points I wanted to speak to the three who didn't get to attend the Finance Committee meetings, uh, about. And I don't know if you guys are having interest in walking through the chart and diagram?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Classic.
I'll, I'll speak to myself on this.
Yeah, and the, and the real key is that this is a before and after snapshot. All the resolution does is give us some flexibility in when we release the payments, uh, to our vendors. So I've, I've brought you the policy and the resolution. We have it on the agenda for next week for adoption, if this council is supportive of us moving this direction.
Finance Committee?
Yeah.
And I, and your which in.
The thing too is, it's not necessarily gonna happen with every single payable cycle. It's, it's those anomalies where council might not need for four weeks. You got a vendor who desperately needs payment.
Who's seen it?
Provides, yeah.
And then we come back within a month or the next meeting.
Yeah, we have it that within thirty days of issuing the payment, we bring back to the council.
But we can't issue any, even with, with, even with these changes, we can't issue any payment that isn't.
Within budget.
Yeah, within the budget, authorized within the budget. Uh, it's the, it's the, uh, check register that you're approving and the consent agenda has these items in it.
And I think the point that it's authorized by the State Otter's Office is a big problem still. It's not something we're making up on the fly.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah, and lots of other cities, of course, you know, have embraced this practice now, because council meetings, they're necessarily time-well pointing the line, you make payments to vendors. And a number of our things that we do actually make payments for, I would make that payment regardless. So like, uh, our debt service, for example, bond payments, even if we didn't have a council meeting, because it's already authorized in the budget, I have authority to make that payment. And so, I would still come back and request the official approval, but it's already in there. The, the other neat thing about this is it actually, um, as you read over the policy and the resolution, the finance department already has these internal controls in place, and these are the processes that we already go through. So we have just memorialized our practices, and then we now request it for formal adoption from the council to say, "Yes, this is best practice, this is the way we should go about this in the city." This is the way we should go about this in the city.
Could be grabbed on the way.
Not question, because he's got item seven, which is last questions on the budget. And I, so I've got two that I'd like to, one, we discussed community service position. Um, also, just to make you aware, we do not, uh, uh, receive a T I D award for the Anderson Hill Roundabout. So, that wasn't in the budget.
Correct, it was not in the budget.
So, we don't need to do anything with the budget with that. But, uh, we will, uh, if we can get our right-of-way certified on that, we still have, if we support the right-of-way to certify. I think we'll score much better next time.
So, are we not moving forward with that project?
Well, we can't without, we don't have the capacity to do that without the grant.
Okay.
So, we, we've got a hundred percent design on the shelf and we'll just move forward with the grant requests if we can get that right-of-way certified before the next, uh, application process. So, other than that, I don't, I'm not aware of anything else. I have, nobody else has brought any concerns or questions in the budget to me. So, I think it's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, we're in the last public hearing and budget work.
You guys got your detailed books, um, so, you know, give any questions to Noah or I if you, if you think of something in the next week.
And it might be timely, real quick, um, John wasn't here tonight. I'm gonna give a quick Finance Committee report because I think it's all relevant. And so, we continue to see very positive results with sales tax revenues, um, year-to-date, year and projections are solid. Um, funds and accounts, same thing. So, we believe that our, our starting balances for the financial budget are gonna be exactly where we'd like them to be. If not, maybe even a little bit better. Uh, Tremont Wyden project, um, basically everything's kind of continues to be on plan. We hope to be able to throw down some asphalt layers later, the new roundabout here in the next couple of weeks. But things will slow down because of the winter season. But financially, as far as part of plan, everything is on plan. I just heard about the, the new authorities with our special payables. Um, capital project updates every quarter. He brings us up to kind of, you know, or this mode of let's get these things done. And it's really nice to see that projects are continuing to move towards completion. And that's a big thing going into the next year. And then same thing with that bus, budget status update, um, we didn't have any other concerns that were really there. So, that was. And tonight, and so my point is, is going toward approval of the budget here over the next few weeks. Everything that we've been projecting out from ending this particular, um, financial cycle is right on track. So, no surprises.
And then we have two council meetings in December. So, at, uh, I think it's the last one, I'm gonna bring the final budget amendments. We'll bring forward all last budget amendments for this fiscal year period. Uh, you have to finish all your budget amendments prior to the close of the fiscal year. So, this will be our last attempt, uh, to clean up anything, make sure we capture anything that we talked about today with the respek of the budget amendments. Uh, so there's a list that we've been tracking that we'll bring forward and that will be our last one for the year.
Good.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nick, for multifamily property tax exemption.
Yeah, so this is a continuation. We, um, during council committee reports, Councilmember Deener reported on this at the last meeting. And I, uh, provided some additional information concerning our multifamily tax exemption ordinance. Uh, we adopted this, uh, about a little over two years ago. Um, we've had one project take advantage of it. And it's been a, a little bit of a learning curve as we've tried to implement the processes for, uh, carrying this out. And one of the things that we've realized is that, um, uh, you know, our, we have some issues with how we calculate what is an affordable housing unit. And there's also questions based on how Bremerton and other cities have done things about whether we should designate, uh, more of our urban centers to include, uh, to be included in the tax abatement program. Uh, I think we've decided that those two discussions, uh, and also what percentage of units would be affordable, uh, should be carried forward into next year. But we have a more, a more immediate question, which is, uh, we had a request from, uh, Robert Graham, who is here, uh, tonight. Um, concerning a specific property next to Fred Meyer on Sedgwick. It's just east of Fred Meyer, uh, immediately adjacent to the Fred Meyer site. They have a project that includes, uh, I think about a hundred and thirteen or a hundred and fifteen units, um, that they are proposing. They are seeking, uh, to be able to utilize the multifamily tax abatement in that property, but that would require an amendment of the map by the city council. Um, so at the last, uh, meeting when we discussed this, I got some really good feedback from the council. And, and my direction was just to bring back a proposal that, that could be discussed. However, after considering your comments and talking about this with staff, the, the one thing that we realized is that. If we're going to expand the tax abatement area, do we want to, uh, offer twelve-year abatement at all? Because it is so easy to meet the criteria for twelve-year abatement because a market rate unit qualifies as affordable. And you basically get four years of abatement for nothing. So, we, we proposed two alternatives. One was exactly as you requested, just adding this property within the existing framework and not changing the framework. The second alternative, um, with the exception of downtown, we proposed to do away with twelve-year abatement. And the reason we kept it downtown is number one, there's several projects that have been considering abatement as part of a, a proposal. There's higher costs of development downtown related to underground parking and also building on fill. And, um, finally, we think that the rents downtown are potentially higher than in other parts of the city based on proximity to transit and amenities. And so, there, you may actually have to, to go below market rate in order to qualify for twelve-year downtown. And so, we didn't want to, to mess up any performers or anything that's, are in the works. We don't have a single other proposal for abatement anywhere else in the city. And so, there's nothing we're aware of that we're affecting if we get rid of the twelve-year abatement, at least temporarily.
And Simmons, I think, is moving forward on the next phase of.
Well, they're not in the map. They're, they're not, that property isn't in the existing map.
Okay.
So, um, so anyway, that, we have two options. Um, I think you can go with either, you can go with neither. There's no obligation to actually provide abatement to, to anyone. Um, but this is something, this is at least a starting point of what I would expect to be a two-step process. Where you consider an immediate action now, followed by some additional study over the first quarter of next year, uh, with looking at the centers and how we calculate affordable housing.
I would offer too, when we did our prior, uh, we'll put this on the books. Um, I don't think we did enough outreach to the other taxing, the school district, the library district, and the fire district. Operating the same pool of property taxes as we did. Uh, the fire district in particular wasn't happy with this.
Okay, I can see that.
Right, and, uh, I think we owe it to them to have some conversation or the mayor needs to have some conversation with them. And make them aware that we're talking about tweaking this. And maybe even, I traveled to one of their board meetings and talked to their, the fire district. And they, um, you know, it impacts the fire department.
Well, I would think the fire department, remember talking apartments, not only the fire department, the schools. Because the, the residents are probably going to have young people who are impacting the schools. So.
We get other revenue from properties, you know, from impact fees, sales tax, you know, these other entities survive solar.
Yeah, really the schools don't receive much from property tax. It's not.
Okay.
They're, when they go out after levies and hopefully someday bonds, um, it, it's a fixed amount. They're guaranteed to get that amount regardless of the total value, right? They should take the total value of the school district and you share that equally. And so, whether there's an abatement or not for the lion's share of their funding is not, it does not affect them.
You know, in defense of our position, you know, in particular redevelopment, the argument I used to, to the police chief or the fire chief is. We're taking down old buildings and you're getting modern buildings that have lower risk of fire. And, and, and his argument back is it's, that's only a small component of what they do. It's EMS service that, um, you know, and new residents.
And I would add, and I, I really appreciate providing these numbers because I would add, you know, if we're gonna be forward-thinking, right? Look at what we're doing to set up the future of these taxing districts for a million dollars.
Correct.
Nothing happens, you know, and so we can look down the road and, um, and see the positive impacts of it grow, of that growth.
I'm, I'm just voicing that we'll, we'll get some dialogue.
Yeah.
In particular, the fire district.
Part of that dialogue should be make sure we're looking down the road too.
Yeah.
I, I, the only other thing that I would add to this conversation is that we're, we seem to be in a, still a pretty strong multifamily building environment. But the housing market is showing signs of slowing down. And so, um, you know, getting, getting a project of this valuation on the tax rolls, you know. There may be a limited window for these types of projects. And, you know, three or five years from now, um, everything may have dried up. And nobody's lending on these or wanting to build this type of housing. And so, um, you know, we're, we definitely have an opportunity right now to, to get something like this on the tax rolls. And, um, if in fact, the, the project doesn't pencil without this, which, you know, we won't know without see, we don't have access to perform or anything. Um, but it's, it's a gamble that we're, we're taking.
So, the next steps on this, would you like to be able to reach out to these taxing districts over the next?
Fire district in particular.
And then, and then move this forward to?
Well, I think I would need to know some direction. The staff and I would need some direction. What is it you guys wanna do so that I know what I'm talking to these other folks about?
I like where Nick is going with, with this delineation of the twelve versus eight. I think he's spot on with that. And I don't, I don't know that we need to offer the additional four or three years if the, the market rents are, are what they are.
Did we do a survey to find out what our market rents?
Um, it's actually, uh, uh, Department of Labor, I think it's Department of Labor Statistics that we use for Silverdale, Bremerton. And so, they, based on household size, they give you a median income number. And then the statute says that you can't spend more than thirty percent of median income on rent. Um, there's also jurisdictions that have an ownership formula as well, but slightly different. Um, and it's supposed to include your utility costs as part of your, your monthly rent. Thirty percent, more than thirty percent can't go to housing. Um, what Seattle has done is they've actually got a graduated scale where they said that we want five percent of units going to people making forty percent of median income. We want another five that are below sixty and then the remainder are eighty or below. And then the eighty to one-twenty range is not an option there. And so, if, if affordable housing is something that we're looking at, we really need to look at what are our market rents? And how much below market rent do we need to be to accommodate certain populations that may not have opportunities, uh, in Port Orchard? And also, where do we want those?
That was my question because we've got the new apartments out on Sedgwick, um, Sydney. And I just wondered, do we know what those apartments rent for?
I, I.
Are they full?
I don't know if they're full. I've been, I just checked Craigslist periodically to see what's advertised. And off of pottery in some of the older apartments, um, I think it was like, uh, twelve hundred dollars for a two-bedroom apartment. Um, and.
Was it about fifteen out there? They didn't want?
Yeah, so.
They were a lot, but it might be more than that now.
Yeah, I'd say the Rush Sinclair, that's, they gotta be eighty percent.
They got some three bedrooms, I think they're going about, I wanna say sixteen, eighteen.
They gotta be eighty percent. Let me just.
Yeah. So, in the range that we saw, when you look at eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of median income, I think the range was twelve hundred up to nineteen hundred. Depending on the family size and the number of, or the, the size of the bedroom. And so, or the number of bedrooms. Um, so, most units are pretty close, not including utilities, to being, uh, market rate.
I think you also, Nick, make a good case for keeping the twelve-year abatement program downtown to offset those development costs.
Yeah, at, at least for now. And then, and the other thing about downtown is there's services available for people who might be in need of affordable housing. Whereas, uh, other areas that either, either aren't served by transit or, you know, it's just really hard to get around for somebody who doesn't have a car. Um, maybe it doesn't make sense to have affordable units out there.
So, would you like, you would like Fire Chief to, or, to talk about this? Would you just like me to go out and have a cup of coffee with the Fire Chief and talk to him about it?
Yeah, I'd start with you going out and talking a little about it.
Okay.
Some feedback that leads to that.
Okay, okay. And then I'll circle back next week. If I can get hold of him this week, then I'm gonna get a holiday here. Whether I can get, get in front of the chief before I next come.
See us take action on the request in front of us, you know, without this, this partial, I think we.
But here, we're, we're taking the twelve, we're taking the twelve-year off the table in many areas. So, that should appeal to the fire department too.
Yes.
And so, there are specific statutory requirements for advertising a hearing for this type of amendment. And so, um, we can put it on for the, the second, are we having a meeting, the second, uh, normal meeting of January or of December?
Yeah, we're doing the.
Two meetings.
Two, so the second meeting of December, I guess we would propose a hearing and then you could take action if you wanted to. But I, let's just say tentatively, that's when we'll do it pending the discussion with the fire district.
Then it could get delayed into the first part of January if he wants to be part of the work center.
Yeah. And I think the, the, um, group that's looking at this project, I know that they're looking potentially to break ground in March. And so, timing was important on this. And waiting until mid-January is, you know, we lose a lot of time with the no fourth meeting in December. Or no.
But we have, we have time, a time schedule we have to follow before we could allow that far.
Yeah, I, I think we could, we could still make either December meeting, but I think with the holiday this week, the, we've already missed a publication deadline. And so, we'd have to get into a slightly later paper.
Before we end?
Yeah.
Can we circle back to item seven and talk a little bit about what we heard on the course of the presentation?
Certainly. So, Scott, can I talk a little more about courthouse presentation?
I feel like the elephant in the room is parking. And I don't, I don't know what maybe your private discussions have.
Well, what I, what I heard here tonight was that we're, they're gonna develop four hundred plus parking stalls on the property that they have ahead of phase one. So, we, we need to, ultimately, we've gotta have, and they're talking about it, and that's been my conversation. Uh, we need a development agreement that spells out what the county's gonna do. There's gonna, there's gonna be phases to this. And there's gonna be milestones to this. And I, and it's their, they've gotta present to us what, what it is.
Right.
They're beginning to build and then we're gonna determine what the parking needs are for what they build. And as they build the next phase, but I think it's gonna be way more cost-effective for them to build all the parking up front. And it, there, there's demand for need. And they're gonna need it for the construction.
I, I thought the parking, the discussion was pretty loosey-goosey.
Yeah.
And, I mean, they're showing nine hundred and admittedly, that's up twenty, eighty-five, you know, whatever.
That's nine hundred, including the existing.
Right, and.
That, that's not what their slide shows. It identifies that for courthouse only.
Yeah. And I think that, that, that's the one I was, you know, saying, I've already had people coming up to me from the neighborhood, talking, you know, that I work with, talking about this. They have some concern about height, but they're more worried about the impact on the neighborhood. And, and I, and I, you know, that was a lot, that was a lot.
Excludes.
Six, twelve, take it away. And I, I know we're just in the planning phase, you know, planning phase, and I get that, but, you know, that's already coming to the forefront.
I, I would just say, I think the mayor is spot on. We're gonna have, the, what they're saying is parking is phase zero. We're gonna have a development agreement that has a table that says phase one, these are the requirements of phase one, how many parking stalls are gonna be provided.
Is it argued?
No.
And what road improvements are needed, what offsite improvements are needed. And all of that's gonna be laid out. The other thing is there's going to be an incentive for them to actually complete the project within twenty years. Because we're, we're, they're asking for some flexibility on certain building codes with repurposing the old building and not fully bringing it up to code. Because they're gonna tear it down. And so, we've been talking with the building inspe, the building inspector in the fire district about, um, you know, allowing them to reuse that without, you know, spending a whole lot of money on it. And, um, so part of that is that if they build phase one and then never resume construction for forty years, you know, that's not okay with the city to, to allow that to be a permanent use. We wanna, we want a finality.
So, they may need some triggers for additional improvements to the existing structure if they don't build phase two or phase three.
Correct.
Certain timelines because we want them out of that old building. And we're gonna waive certain building code requirements to bring it up, come on code, because they plan to tear it down. Well, if you get fifteen years down the road and they haven't moved, then we're gonna make them do certain, rather improvements to the existing.
I'm remembering from the presentation they gave us this summer is that they were not going to increase their footprint. And they were going to do all of their parking on that footprint. Now, what I've heard tonight is that they're going to, they have property on Taylor and they may acquire more property on Taylor.
Well, but they talked about that this summer. You know, they talked about that, that whole wooded area, we're about a lot.
Okay.
Which, yeah, that by itself is interesting because there's a ravine that they were.
Right.
And that's their, they've got a.
Yeah, right.
Right, it's a plan. We don't, I mean, we, I just appreciate that they were here tonight and we weren't reading this in the paper tomorrow. You know, that's.
No, I'm not, I don't think you guys disagree. And we do have a lot more planning to go, you know, and, I mean, we're not even at ten percent desire. But, you know, it's just, you know.
Details of the other development.
But because it's, because of the fact that it's in the city limits, it's gonna be this, not yin and yang, but we're gonna hear about it.
Yep.
Loud and clear.
And we, and as Nick and I are discussing here, it's, it's, the details are in that development agreement, as I was just saying. And we've got to get the parking, we know that. And we've been, I think all of us have been saying that, parking is, as they said, phase zero. So, show us what your parking plan is, you know, it's part of this. phase zero. So show us what your parking plan is, you know, as part of this.
Right. And it's not just courts and jurors. You've got a lot of county employees that work all on all the side streets and up and down. And we have to issue it all the time.
And if we keep pointing the finger at county, we're guilty too. Okay?
Yeah.
We don't have enough parking either. We, we have employees on the street because we lack parking. And so we need to address that ourselves too.
One finger at you, three back at me?
And that's one.
Yeah.
So I'm not confused, but boy, I love seeing all the work upon Tremont. And then, you know, because of the weather, thank God, has been, is absolutely beautiful. And so I heard, you know, base coat, you know, base layer on Tremont, is that going to open it any earlier? Or, I mean, what is, what are we?
It's changed in the last week. They've been adamant, they were going to keep the pottery roundabout closed until the end.
Yep.
Well, when I came back from the airport Saturday night, I drove in and they've got the median there.
That's right.
How, once they pave, you're not going to be able, if you, the plan is to shift all the traffic to the north side, you couldn't get to the detour route. It's pretty obvious there. And once we get that paving done, then I have to open the roundabout.
So we may be able to go all the way down to Tremont?
Someday.
No. Sooner than later.
Sooner than we anticipate, yes. But I just, I'm hesitant. They think they're going to pave next week. It's wet. The forecast is.
Wet. Okay. But if we get a spot between there, we might be open it early.
Well, they're going to shift, between pottery and Port Orchard Boulevard, they're going to do the north half.
Right.
Then they're going to shift traffic over. Then they're going to do the south half, get it prepped, get it paved. And at that point, everything has base paving. And they're going to close Tremont Place back off permanently. So that's, once that's gone, that's gone. And with the median, it's gone. So they're going to be, they're going to have to use pottery as part of the traffic control movement.
And we'll be out of rolling in May.
Yes.
You know, which, I mean, God bless those people.
Whether or not we, whether or not we, they open traffic or when they open traffic on the base course between South Kitsap and Port Orchard Boulevard, that's not yet determined.
But it's a possi, it's a possibility.
It's more of a possibility now than it was three weeks ago.
You make the school district very happy.
It's, it's progressive here.
No, it looks so nice.
One last real quick thing is the concrete problem, quality of concrete in McCormick Woods Park.
Concrete, there's no concrete problems, is there?
No concrete problems?
No, we have a, we have a, a quality issue with the paving of the parking lot. I think they're probably going to reject. But so we're going to.
Okay, and that's McCormick Woods.
That's in the McCormick Woods Park. And I sent an email out today and we canceled that river.
Yes, yes, yes.
And we're looking for both of them. More to come on that. It's in my mayor's report next week. It's getting late. Easy journey.
Thank you.